All right, so we had no public comments.
And I have-
Called the order at 6:01, none pub- yeah, perfect. And you said none for adjustments to the agenda?
No, I have a suggestion.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to propose that we take the executive session number eighteen. Since we're talking about the principals evaluation and compensation off, and we put that on the twenty-fourth. For our, I know it's a budget workshop, but I would rather do that in person.
So eighteen and nineteen table that to next meeting?
That would be my suggestion.
That sounds fine.
Okay.
All right. Any other adjustments to the agenda? All right, next we will go to business office, so signing of AP warrants that went out yesterday. And then, or did everybody sign, or did anybody have any questions or need to go to the office to, or the town to view it or anything? Are we all set with the AP warrants?
Vina did not get the Adobe, and I have to resend it to Vina, so that's the only, just because I had the wrong-
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
All right, so we'll be all set there, then. Financial report. Is that Steph?
That's me. Let me open it. So, let's see, our target percent of budget based on a twelve-month calendar was forty-two percent. Right now, our expenditures are forty-six percent spent, and our revenues are at fifty-nine point four-five percent. So we've actually received six hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars more than we've expended so far. So we are in great shape as far as that goes. I am working on cleaning up these reports with Aptifund, so after a lot of digging and research, they finally agreed and confirmed that when they set up our our database, they did unemployment and workers' comp calculations incorrectly. And we have it, so it looks like we spent more than we have because when payroll is processed, Paula is actually doing an adjustment to the check. But Aptifund can't figure out as of yet where those adjustments are hitting on the line items so that we can make it, make the expense correct. So that's been a bit of a frustrating process, but we will get there.
So the actual money leaving our account is correct, it's just not reflected correctly in our software?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, so we have spent in unemployment and in workers' comp much less than the reports are showing. And, which is great. And then, just because I'm trying to get all of the accounts right and cleaned up, they also set up accounts incorrectly. And so things are hitting in weird places, as we've said every month, but it's just a very long and time-consuming process to change account codes and shut them down and open them, and it's like a four-step process for each one. So it's, it will happen, but it's a little slow. So until we get to that, my recommendation is to go to the subtotal for each cost center and look at that percent that has been spent, because that is representing all of the movement of account lines and gives you the actual number instead of trying to decipher there's zero budgeted, but we spent, or there's some budgeted, but we didn't spend. And, you know, it just gets confusing. So that would be my recommendation. And as always, I'm available if you have questions. Just shoot me an email and I can get answers.
Is that summary one meant to be just the line, the, the one that's in the shared folder, the comparative financial statements that says summary, budget to actual summary, is that just the full cost center together?
Correct. Yeah, that's each cost center.
That's great. That's helpful explanation. I appreciate it.
Sure, you're welcome.
All right, excellent. Any other questions regarding financials of the central office in our school? Well, our school, not central office, our school. Different meeting for that one. All right. Next up is vote discussion, so we have resolution and inter-local agreement for financial third-party administrator.
So Stephanie did a ton of work to we have to by Department of Labor regulations, offer people retirement plans that they can choose to participate in. We don't have to match or anything like that, but we have to set it up in payroll and we have to offer those plans. And we did, we had some plans, they were very disorganized and kind of all over the place, really hard to set up. And they were not in compliance with the DOL expectations. So Steph did a ton of research this year, met with different companies. And then we finally settled on a company that is what's called a third-party administrator. So they take care in the back end of all of the regulations, all of the rules or manuals that need to be updated, and they, and they organize the, the plans that we offer, like we have to offer a Roth IRA, and we have to offer, you know, those different types of options for people to take advantage of. So we settled on this company, it's called Hub. And it is the inter-local agreement there that I sent you guys is, is thousands of school districts across the country that are joining together to have some purchasing power in, to keep rates low. So the way it works, and you probably do this at your own work, somebody, you want to start an IRA, you pay a small fee for, to join the IRA, and then you put your money in the IRA and et cetera and so on. This company would do that work for you, so it would really streamline that work for all employees in the district. There is still that small fee, but this inter-local agreement keeps that small fee small. The other piece of this, and the other opportunity that this presented for us, is that there's also some free financial planning that goes, that would be available to all the employees. And for that, the school district needs to pay a thousand dollars. Each of our three school districts pays a thousand dollars to participate in this FINPATH, it's called, it's, it's some free financial planning for folks. So it's an added benefit that would cost them, cost everybody way more money than, than, than that. And it's a one-time thousand-dollar hit. It's not a annual, it's not an annual hit. So Steph and I would like to, to work with this company. The board has to vote to approve the joining of the inter-local agreement and, and approve the resolution, the board resolution, which is this, this document that I sent you that I would then send to Tracy to, to sign. The resolution would be that you're approving the terms and conditions of the inter-local agreement, which was this document that I sent along between the employer and the Educational Service Center in Region Ten, which is us, and the ESC Region Ten Third-Party Administrative Services. So I'm hoping you had a chance to look at that, and you're, you want to sign on to that? What do you think?
Do we have an estimated ca- I mean, I know we need to do it, but I'm more just wondering, like, is there an estimated cost of, a ballpark of what this might?
Cost of-
In this, yeah.
The school district, one-time thousand-dollar fee.
So they're paying the twenty, the, the member themselves is paying the twenty-two dollars per member, they, like-
That seems good and reasonable, yeah.
All right. Sounds good to me. Anybody else have any other questions about? Or is there anything else we should know about potential impact, or, I'm hoping there's no hidden, like-
Actually, no.
Not that you would know all the hidden stuff, but, yeah.
There's no hidden impact. Steph and I went through this pretty, with, we've talked to this guy quite a bit. And this is the way these things, you know, even now, like, even though we don't have anything organized on our end, people who, like, I, I joined one of those when I first started here, and I paid my nominal fee, you know, it, the school district has nothing to do with it except that payroll
We offer it.
To be set up to, to pay it.
Yeah.
So the, oh, I had another thought and it went out of my head, sorry. That'll come back. Oh, I know.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, the other benefit that I don't think we pay, you know, we're not gonna pay any money for, but the benefit to the employees to have this opportunity, like, this guy will stream in, he will tell them all about this, this free financial planning, that's a great benefit to give our staff. That's all, that was the other hidden benefit.
Yeah, and though, if we can, if we continued on the route that we are with the several different providers, not the right word, sorry, I'm whatever they're called, financial companies. In order to get us up to compliance, they, I, I talked to one in great detail. And they would charge, each of them would charge us in order to get all of our documentation into compliance. And it's so old, they don't have copies of it, and we don't have copies of it. So they would be starting over. So each of those companies would probably, the one we talked to for sure, would charge us a thousand dollars. But then, that would be, per company would also charge us. So it would be, end up being very expensive to stay with the same providers that we use currently, and it's very difficult to get signed up as an employee.
All right. Makes sense to me. Anybody else have any other questions? If no, if someone wants to make a motion to approve the resolution inter-local agreement for financial third-party administrator?
I will make a motion for the resolution and inter-local agreement for financial third-party administrator.
I will second.
All right, so Kirsten motioned and Emily seconded, all in favor. That is all four of us.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the acceptance of the minutes of the January sixth regular school committee meeting. Does anybody see anything that need any edits or anything like that? If not, we can take a motion to approve the minutes of the January sixth meeting.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
Emily?
Yes.
All right, so Emily made a motion to accept the minutes and a second.
I'll second.
And Kirsten seconds. All right, all in the favor of accepting the minutes of the January sixth twenty-twenty-five regular school committee meeting. And that is all four. Next is a discussion around forming a student learning subcommittee.
So we-
And I don't, yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't know if Kirsten or Kate or either one of you kind of wanna talk about the origin story of it?
Yes. Well, yeah, and Kirsten, jump in, we, we've had some discussions around the table about different subcommittees and what they do and what the board's responsibility is. And one of the questions came up around student data and how the students are doing, and then Kirsten and I had a conversation, and I've been on boards in the past where there were a lot of little subcommittees, and there was always one on student learning. And that subcommittee would meet with myself, Justin, occasionally throughout the year and keep kind of the pulse of the data that's coming in that we use for social, emotional, and academic growth for the kids, how we know what we're doing, where we're going with curriculum, why. So there's, just like with the facilities committee, sort of a, a larger discussion, a longer discussion, and a discussion with other stakeholders that then could be brought to the school committee in a shortened version so that, you know, someone else is doing basically the research and informing you guys. So that was the impetus behind bringing up this extra subcommittee, not extra, actually, new subcommittee.
Yeah, I, just personally, I think the facilities committee has been so helpful in doing a deep dive and taking a lot more time than we can take in our monthly meetings, and I do feel like there is sort of a mandate for our school board to be paying attention to this stuff that we just don't have the bandwidth to do in our meetings. And I would strongly advocate for forming the subcommittee, and of course, I'd love to be on it.
I would love for you to be on it, too. I think it's a great idea.
Cool.
I think it's an area that we have, there's a lot of need for us to, I don't know, put our fingers in the pot, not very, you know, a little bit, a little bit. I think it's a good, a good thing to do. I support it.
All right. So is it actually a vote to form that subcommittee, or we just actually have to vote on who's gonna be nominated to it?
I'm, I, I really don't know. I don't think we normally vote to form our subcommittees. Let me see if this, there is a policy on subcommittees. It's not very-
We can do it, just to be formal and official about it. Anybody want to make a motion for us to formally form a student learning subcommittee?
I'll make a motion to formally form a student learning subcommittee.
I will second.
All in favor of forming a student learning subcommittee? All four? And anybody else, so Kirsten's interested in being on it, is there anybody else that would like to also join in with that? And don't all speak at once? And Amy isn't able to join tonight, but we can also because that way that it's not, yeah, not just a party of one on-
Yeah, it's, it's fine. I'll recruit, I'll recruit one of you guys.
I was gonna say, if Amy isn't, doesn't have the bandwidth for it, because I think she'd be interested, it's just a matter of timing. If she doesn't, then I'll do it. That way then we at least have two people on it, if that's all good with you guys?
That's awesome.
Okay.
Hey. Fabulous. So we'll set up a meeting before our next, before March third, so we can at least form a meet, a group and yeah.
All right, so we got Kirsten on it, and then we'll have Amy have first refusal. If she doesn't have the time for it, then I'll be the second person on that subcommittee with Kirsten. All right. Next up, I know it says nine, but it's actually eight bus bids. The numbering just got weird. Number eight is blank, unless we want to say we're having a topic of blank. But plow right through that one.
I'm so proud of myself for fixing the numbers at the end of it, of the stupid agenda. So, all right.
So next will be bus bids. What we got?
We have two bids. We have, and I'm, I'm opening them as we speak. We have a, a bus bid here from Northeast Charter. It's gonna make a lot of noise, sorry. Northeast Charter has submitted a bid a three-year bid with a one-year extension for up to five years if mutually agreed upon, which is how we have always done, I believe, the contracts with Northeast Charter. They've included our RFP, which is great. And I don't see, it's, I'm just really quickly looking at this because lots of pages, but I don't see anything out of the ordinary. We provide the fuel. The buses have seventy-two passenger capacity, the buses are equipped with radios, backup buzzer, interior cameras located in the front and the back, and four convex mirrors. That's what we asked for. Now, they said cross-reference with four thirteen, so I don't see with Scott's here, so we can ask him if that's on the, if those are supplied on the buses. We need proof of insurance. This is all our, our RFP, so let me get to the end. Okay. So Scott has made this proposal in good faith without fraud, collusion, or connection to any kind of bidder in the same work with this company. All right. All right, so Scott has listed a tran- a co-coordinator, Travis Willis, who we've already been working with. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight drivers, and two mechanics. And their garage that they're using is on Broadus Road in Lincolnville. They have been in this business for nineteen years. They own fifteen buses, Northeast Charter does. They work with Lincolnville, they work with Acadia Academy in Lewiston and Auburn Public Schools in Auburn. They assign drivers for each route within the system. Each driver will have twenty-four-seven contact with our dispatch operations department and maintenance department. They will use their facility, their garage facility, as they have been doing, and they continue to offer the use of their bulk diesel fuel tank to the Lincolnville school during the con- term of the contract. And that tank and its contract, content are insured. And we, we purchase bulk deliveries of diesel fuel at wholesale, wholesale rates. Let's see. Preventative maintenance, they do preventative maintenance, follow state and federal requirements. They provide training for all the bus drivers. The bus drivers are, the trainees are paid twenty-one dollars an hour, and all of the drivers are insured to meet state and main requirements. How, and one of our questions was how will you provide superior service? They'll continue to offer superior equipment and services to LCS. They are rec- have been recognized for multiple years as the best place to work in Maine employer, and they take great pride in their employees developing a culture to exemplify their goals of providing outstanding transportation services from Maine and around the world. The Lincolnville drivers are paid thirty-eight dollars an hour. Red light run drivers are paid for two hours for their morning route and two hours for their afternoon route, and all drivers are eligible for raises based on performance. Okay, and they are not requesting any exceptions to our bid. So the bid is this. For the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, the bid is three routes. Each one of those routes would cost seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars for a total of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one forty. For the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, again, three routes, each cost for each bus would be eighty-three thousand, three forty-nine for a total of two hundred and fifty thousand, oh four seven. In twenty-seven, twenty-eight, again, three routes. The cost for each bus for that year would be eighty-seven thousand, five hundred and seventeen dollars for a total of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, five five one. Okay, cost of fuel is not included, that's a difference. All right, so cost per mile for field trips and athletic rates for this year, next year rather, would be four dollars and twenty-five cents. The cost per mile for the year after would be four dollars and forty-seven cents, and the cost per mile for the third year would be four dollars and sixty-nine cents. The cost per hour for wait time is fifty-five dollars and seventy-four cents, and the minimum charge is a hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-five cents, that's for next year. In the year after that, twenty-six, twenty-seven, that goes up to fifty-eight, fifty-two per hour, minimum charge of two oh eight thirty-seven. And the final year of this contract is a cost of wait time of sixty-one dollars and forty-five cents. Minimum charge, two eighteen seventy-nine. Any questions on the Northeast Charter bid?
I just missed one of the numbers, the wait time on the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
What cost per hour of wait time is fifty-five dollars and seventy-four cents for the twenty-five, twenty-six, is that what you asked?
Yes, and the, in the minimum.
Minimum charge is a hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-five cents.
Awesome, thank you.
So the second bid we received was from Vision With Purpose in Union. Opening that bid in public here, all right. So similarly, they laid out how many bus drivers, what other companies they work with, address, all that stuff. This company works with Baxter Academy, it works with the Five Town CSD. It works with School Union sixty-nine for Hope in Appleton, and works with Northport, MSU. Their onsite transportation manager is Jason Luth. They use their own garage and mechanics that's in Union. Drivers do preventative maintenance, checks, buses are inspected every six months as required by state, so they're meeting state. Will, same with training. And students are trained two times yearly as required by the state. And their comment is, safe drivers are the backbone of school busing. Without them, we have nothing. In terms of this, how do we provide a superior service, the answer is, their answer is, it really starts with great drivers, but apart from that, I, this has been Luth, the owner, takes great pride in working with the schools personally to ensure all goes well. Or in case if something doesn't, we solve it together. Okay, here's the bid. They are bidding three routes also. For twenty-five, twenty-six, Route A, the first route, well, each route would be a total cost of sixty-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars per bus. Excuse me, one second, they didn't add that up for a yearly cost. That yearly cost is two hundred thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. In twenty-six, twenty-seven, the total cost would also be sixty-six, seven, seven, one per bus. Again, for that two hundred three thirteen. And then in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, that cost per bus goes up to seventy-two, seven, eight, one for each bus, which is a total of two eighteen, three, four, three. Their field trip cost per mile is three dollars and twenty-two cents. Their cost of wait time is forty-five dollars, and their minimum charge for extracurricular is two hundred dollars. That is the same for athletic trips, and they did not break that out by, they did not break that out by year. So I'm assuming that's for all three years, but we can double-check that. And that is the bid from Luth.
Kate, you specified in the first bid how many drivers
Yes.
have, was, did it, in the second bid, indicate the number?
For Lincolnville, they wrote TBD. Because I, they've never covered Lincolnville before, I'm assuming. And they did not list their other drivers for the other tools.
So in the first bid, there was a list of amenities for the bus, is that also included in the second bid?
So I was not speaking clearly, that was in our, our RFP, things we asked for. And we need to, with both companies, check to see whether or not those things are in, are actually on the buses. I mean, so that was radios, buzzers, and cameras at the front and the back. We would need to get clarification for both, if, if that's what you wanted, for both of those, from both companies.
But we put it in the RFP that that's what we want, so in theory, by them applying, they're saying, or putting in a bid, they're saying, yes, we can do all this. Or is that a false assumption to make?
I don't know the answer to that.
Scott, do you need to-
I understand.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Scott, do you get it? Yeah. You're on mute.
Thank you, appreciate the unmute. I, I take it as in the RFP that those are things you require. But that could be open to interpretation based on the committee and the, and the district. But that could be open to interpretation based on the committee and the, and the district. And, and when I have time and it's appropriate, I have a couple of bullets to go over. Kate will remember that I was away when I learned that the bid was due. So it was a bit of a rush process, but some things have transpired for us that beneficial for the school committee to hear about our company. That wasn't necessarily asked for within the bid. And I'm happy to answer any questions. Sorry, we're, we're en route to help out family shovel snow, so I apologize, I'm in my truck with my wife and my dog. We're, we're here, so we're sitting at the Irving Station in Newport.
Kate, how does that work for, once the bid is close? I just want to make sure that logistically, like, can we ask questions of? Them if they come, or?
Yep.
Do we have to go based on this? Okay, yeah, I just wanted to double check.
I sent him the Zoom link.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Scott, if you wanna tell us the additional info that, yeah.
So we're basically in the five to six percent increase per year. There are a lot of different costs about running transportation. As you know, we did a significant increase a couple of years to go to secure enough drivers. And we've been very happy with the drivers. We've provided a list to you of the first round of drivers that we would provide if need be, if Trish or Ben or Jen were not available. You know, Louis, Northeast Charter Lewiston has forty-five total drivers. And if Ben or Trish or somebody's out sick or has an emergency, we've been able to fulfill those positions with the Northeast Charter drivers. They're not included in that list. But these are our primary people that we would pull from. If you compare this to the bid from two or three years ago, it's much longer, which we're very happy about to be able to provide that. So we do have lots of backups. Marie has some last minute requests once in a while for field trips or sports trips. If we can't get one of the Lincolnville drivers, we've been able to cover that work with the driver from Lewiston to make the trips happen. So there are lots of changes, as you can imagine, in, in the transportation world. The other thing that wasn't, I didn't list in here, and I apologize, but like I said, we learned that the bid was due when I was away at a convention. We have GPS tracking in all of our motor coaches that are on our phones and our laptops. And also included in that GPS tracking is front view and passenger driver view camera systems through a company called SamSarah. So they have been very beneficial for us for training, for things that transpired on the road, for front views of a car running, red lights, you know, anything of those natures. And, and we have those and we have about forty-five total vehicles in our fleet, motor coaches, school buses, et cetera. We operate those in all of our vehicles. And they've, they've been very helpful as to what's going on, whether it's our responsibility or somebody else's responsibility. And, and, and we like that as a tool. The other thing I wanted to add is. At the convention I was at last week in Philadelphia, Northeast Charter was awarded the Good Stewart Award from the American Bus Association. So we do a lot locally for our communities as much as we can, whatever we can. We've had a driver recently, his house burned to the ground. We were able to raise over twenty-seven thousand dollars for him. We deliver potatoes to communities, we do stuff for breast cancer survivors and all of those little things that, that are very important for us to give back. Lewiston is the home of the mass shooting, as you're aware. When, when that transpired, we had a one-year anniversary, we were doing transportation. They anticipated they needed two motor coaches, we said not a problem, they wound up using six. And we gave them six buses to help our community and people who were coming together on the one-year anniversary. So the Good Stewart Award was a great honor for us. And if you're on our social medias and on our websites, you'll start to see some of that, the different things that we do within our company on a regular basis. We are tenants in Lincolnville, I own the property there, the garage that I bought many years ago from John Senior. And then the trailer next door, and then John Senior's parents' house on Brodus Road, we own that. So we are taxpayers, make investments in that area and continue to offer the fuel tank at no charge to you, to use it so we can get the best price on diesel fuel for the vehicles. Happy to answer any questions like Ann about the bid or anything else that I'd like to ask.
Thank you very much. I do remember the last time we were doing bidding, that the, the fuel piece of it actually was. Pretty good deal for us because it was at the bulk rate and rate there. I do remember that from the last time around because they don't, we're not like going to a gas pump.
Right, so you're not paying a driver to go to a gas pump, you're not paying retail or discounted retail rates, you're buying it. Bulk from a local company, we get it locally. And they deliver it to our tank. And, and like I said, that, that fuel content that you pay for is insured by us. That's an important conversation because you're anywhere from eighteen hundred to twenty-five hundred gallons on a delivery. So there's a, you know, fair amount of investment that it's, that's insured.
Anybody else have any other questions or thoughts or anything that are kind of our committee discussion around? One is. Cheaper per bus route. The other, we've been with for a few years and. Kind of have reputation with just because they're in local and also employs our people that are in town as well. So it's kind of like, there's a lot to, you know, goes into that. Anybody have any initial thoughts on one over the other or? Anything like that?
Do we have a sense of how much we have been paying in fuel? On an annual basis?
So I, I don't see those invoices, they, the drivers tell us they're low. We order it, the invoices go right to the, to the, to the admin office at, at the superintendent's office.
I can look, I think, if I can get in and see if I can give you a quick ballpark there.
Ballpark would be great, thanks Steph.
Yeah.
I'm guessing between six, six thousand gallons a year, thinking about how many times they tell us it's, it needs to be filled.
Who, do you know who we pay?
I knew you were gonna ask that question, his name is on my desk. They just got bought out by Dead River. The local company.
Can't think of it. I'll look another way, it's alright.
Oh, it used to be Tidewater. Kurgan, the Tidewater. And they got bought off by Dead River four, five months ago, but we still buy it from them.
Oops. I'm just gonna share my screen because I put the numbers in the, in the minutes. And obviously, there's way more to this than just the numbers, but as Scott just shared. But just there for your, for your, so you can see.
And those were the numbers though, that were just per bus route, not the total for all three.
Right.
Route, correct?
I didn't, yeah, yeah, do you want me to do that?
Which is totally fine, no, no, I just was making sure I was like looking at it going, I think.
Yeah, it's three buses per route, cost for each.
One other thought to know on the pricing of the extracurricular after-school trips is that. If you have a trip that is a seven-hour duration. You pay the hourly fee while the bus is sitting, so sitting at the event. You pay the mileage to the destination, you pay the sitting fee while the bus is there, and then you pay the mileage back. So you don't pay mileage and hourly wage for the duration of the trip. Pay it just while the bus is waiting, so to speak. It's, it's not a combination of the two. So when you're calculating the rate table of, let's say in twenty-five, twenty-six, you're at four twenty-five a mile and fifty-five, seventy-four an hour. If it's a six-hour trip, it's not all of the miles at four twenty-five and fifty-five, seventy-four times six, it's just the amount of time that the driver sits. And the minimums help us. We pay drivers, so more and more employees don't want to come to work for short periods of time. So we have to create some minimums to create incentives for them to come.
They both, you both gave us minimums, I just didn't add them in there, but yes.
Yes.
Sorry, it's a slow process. So we just. Doesn't. It doesn't give me a time period, but. We have only paid Dead River once this year. And we paid them three thousand, sixty-four dollars. So I don't know if they're not, if they're, if they've only invoiced us for a big chunk of time. Because I can't actually see the invoice. Or. If their invoicing is. I mean, it seems like they would have chased us down by now. If there were missing invoices, so I'm gonna guess that was between the beginning of the school year and that was January sixth, so. Through December. And I was.
I think that Tidewater, when it was Tidewater and got, when it got purchased by Dead River, I think it was around September. So prior to September, I'd say it might be under a Tidewater invoice.
Yeah, I looked under the coding. Rather than the vendor, but let me pull up. Last year.
So the other thing that, that works pretty well for us with the buses and fuel consumption is that Trish keeps her bus at home. So it, her route starts over in that direction, so she keeps her bus at home, which cuts down on fuel and miles and fuel consumption. Jen keeps her bus at home because her route starts over that way. And then Ben lives really close to the garage, so he parks his bus at the garage. And the only time the drivers come to the garage is if there's a, a maintenance or a state police inspection or they have to get fuel for the vehicles. So by them keeping him at home, it's definitely saving time and mileage and fuel consumption because they're not back and forth in the garage every day. And it's easier on them as well.
So last year, we spent fourteen thousand dollars in fuel.
Thanks Steph.
Yeah.
I spend that much money in one delivery for the charter buses at the Lewiston Garage. I want your fuel bill.
What do y'all think?
I think everybody's got the numbers right, I'm gonna stop that sharing.
I'm worried that there's something that we're not seeing with the Vision With Purpose bid. You know, as far as, we just talked about fuel costs and whatnot. Is that? Am I off base? I guess that's what I.
Well, I think for me, what the unknown is, so it's like, what it would be like a hundred and thirty thousand less just from the bus runs themselves, right?
Yes.
And then, so it's a matter of the fuel getting that in bulk. And the fact that our bus drivers are nearby, does that offset a hundred and thirty thousand?
We can do some research and let you know what the other two schools pay for, because they do not, you know, they use a different company for fuel. I guess if you wanted to compare, but I don't know, that's hard to compare because who knows what, how many miles, whether it's comparative.
Well, they wouldn't be having a bus barn to go to to fuel up, is the difference.
No, they go, they go to a different wholesaler, that's what I'm saying. They don't go to use that one, they go to a different wholesaler, and I don't know what that rate is off the top of my head.
Okay.
But they have to get, they have to do the same thing is pay for the fuel, so they just go to a different, different company to do that.
So they're paying wholesale for that, not retail, Kate?
I, I'd have to get details, Kirsten, I'm not really, but I do believe they get a bulk rate of some sort. So whether or not it's wholesale, I don't know.
I think I kinda wanna know if the gas money is enough offset or? I mean, when you think of a hundred and three thousand dollars, that's like.
Yeah, it's compared.
Two and a half percent of a budget.
It's gotta be comparative, compared, comparable to, I've never really, we've never really had a long discussion about it. So I'm, I'm assuming it's, it's comparable.
Well, the last time, I think, is, I think it was. Seth that did all of it, that it, it was like. Although at that time, the price of fuel was like, well, above what it is now, but. Because it was right in town, the amount that they had to drive and that it was available at bulk rate that we were purchasing. They were giving us, like, that ended up. Being a savings for us, that did make a slight, I mean. Everything was sticker shock, I think pastime anyway, but I think. Did his say on there? For that Vision With Purpose, did that one say anything about the rate of what we'd caught pay for fuel?
No, because as far as I know, they don't have the same setup as Scott does where they have a fuel system within their.
I know, but we're still paying for fuel, like, they're not absorbing that.
Both companies, we pay for fuel, yes.
Is there anything you guys want for more information? Do you guys feel comfortable making a decision tonight? What's your, what's your pleasure?
I mean, is it possible to get more information about the fuel? And I don't know, is there any more information? Like, Justin, have you met with the, the other company? This is a tough one because the cost difference seems pretty significant here, but Scott, I, I do actually love all your drivers and I love what you guys do. But I think it's, you know, it would be helpful to make sure that we have all the information to weigh.
I mean, the, I, I, I've mostly dealt with Northeast Charter, but I do have just limited experience with Luth. Because they occasionally pick up runs for us when, for athletics and field trips on occasion. But I have no other knowledge about how they source their fuel. Or. What the rate is for their fuel, I don't know, I don't have any information about that.
I can tell you that we pay Midcoast. Main management for fuel. I can't see an invoice, so I can't tell you what the price is per gallon. But as far as how much has been spent on fuel year-to-date, it's comparable when I look at Appleton. But again, I don't know how many miles that is compared to the miles being run by Northeast Charter. So it's, it's not really comparable as far as. Figuring anything out, I think if you wanna know that, you'd have to ask. Luth specifically for more information about the, the agreement they have with Midcoast Main Management and how many miles they anticipate.
Kate, is that something you'd be able to ask?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Scott, do you wanna say something?
One, one thought in comparisons, because you know, for me, every time I run a mile, there's an expense to that for parts and labor as well as fuel. So you know, our buses are local, we know that. I think our, being able to let the drivers keep the buses at home is good for them, it's good for us, it's good for you. And it's ironic that their routes start pretty close to where they live in, but Ben going to the garage every day literally lives around the corner. So where the buses are going at the end of the day helps manage and understand the real number of fuel costs. Because if they're going twelve miles somewhere farther than where they are now, because today, and when Trish gets done, her route is done and she lives around the corner. When Jen gets done, her route is around the corner. So there's a major savings in us having local drivers that can keep their buses at home because they're burning less fuel. I think that's an important component when you're calculating. Me, every time I travel a mile, it costs money. So there's, there's a major expense to think about there and knowing where those vehicles going before and after every day a run runs.
Yeah, I think if we're able to get more information, Kate, from Luth on like what they think the mileage would end up being, or like fuel consumption would end up being given. Our, I mean. Our town roads are still our town roads, hopefully that you would know about how long each route is taking. Our, I mean, our town roads are still our town roads. Hopefully that you would know about how long each route is taking already, that we might be able to find out. If there's kind of like, for lack of a better way to describe it, like a hidden cost that we aren't considering of fuel, whether that would kind of eat up that 130 that is less in each route. Or if it doesn't, then it doesn't. And we're meeting again in a couple of weeks at the beginning, because our next regular scheduled meeting is beginning of March. So it really would, if we're able to get it in the next couple of weeks, then we can add it back onto our agenda.
So the other, the other thing about local is we keep a spare bus in Lincolnville. So we have four, four school buses in Lincolnville at all times. So if one of the buses has a problem, we have a backup bus as a substitute. So Jack Richard, which is John's son, who runs, you know, Earthworks now. Manages our garage, uses our garage. He's our tenant there. If we have a battery issue or a flat tire, they're him or his son are there to help us quickly and locally. And like I said, by us leaving a bus there, if there is an issue with a bus, whatever it may be, we always have a backup to get the kids going. Or we have communication with the drivers. We have the GPSs to tell us where the drivers are. So we can talk to Marie or to Justin to let them know where the bus is, it's going to substitute while another bus is being picked up, et cetera. So that fourth bus is, nothing of that is in the bid. That's just something that we do is just in case, because we have to be prepared for the backup in, in a quick emergency.
Okay.
I, this might be tangential, but I have a recollection that we talked earlier in the year, or maybe last year about using some software, some software to like, look at our routes and see if there was a more optimal way to route to perhaps go down to like two routes. Is that anything that ever, that we ever got data back on, Justin? Do you remember what I'm talking about?
I think he was talking with Camden.
Yeah, I was. Yeah, Camden reached out to me about using their, their route efficiency software. I had asked them and they said, yes, if they could find time and I sent them all of our information, but I don't, it's busy. Everybody, they didn't have time to help us with that. So I don't blame them.
The state of Maine, the state of Maine school bus divisions owns a software called Transfinder. And that may be what Camden has, Justin. I don't know. But Transfinder is why, if you remember a year ago, we had made a suggestion that you could go to two routes, two buses and save some time and money. And we did remember Tim Turcot ran, went to Lincolnville for multiple days and ran all those routes. Put that together. And then in the end, about a month and a half, maybe two months after school had started, committee or the board of the school came back to us and said, we'd like to go back to three routes. So we have, we have looked at that. It is dual, but I think what it wound up doing is parents recognized kids were sitting on a bus longer than they would prefer. And it was all in the proposal, I think is the board we sat and went over the options, because we had options to two bus route or a three bus route. But Transfinder is a software that the state of Maine.
Any other questions that we might have, or do you feel all comfortable waiting to get more information and then we'll put it back on the agenda for March and make a decision at that point, once we know about the fuel consumption and costs?
I think gathering more information is a, a good idea.
All right. And then Kate, I know you said you had pulled together that, those numbers. Can we, do you mind emailing that to us in the meantime? And we can put that on the shared drive too of like, here's the numbers that we can kind of be able to have.
I'll take the whole, all the minutes that I took and I will.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Scott, for also answering our questions live as well. That was really helpful so that we can make sure that we're making a very well-informed decision.
My pleasure. If you have any questions, Kate has my cell and my email. Don't hesitate to reach out. Anytime we, we love looking at Lincolnville and we hope to continue our relationship, but let us know where we're going.
All right. Thank you.
Have a good day. Thank you.
You too. Bye bye.
Bye, Scott. Thank you.
Bye Kate. Take care. Thank you.
All right. Next we have resignation nominations. Any?
None from, none from me.
All right. Next up will be the second reading and vote to approve DJR federal procurement manual.
Yes. So we have been around and about on this one for a while and we got a policy approved last year. And then decided to open it back up again to to as we discussed at our last meeting. Just make the changes that I sent you that are highlighted, which just a, I'm opening the wrong one. Sorry. A third category of spending. So each category of spending, micros spending and moderate spending and small purchases and large purchases requires a more each, as you go higher, requires more. What's the word I'm looking for? Sorry. A greater level of scrutiny and a greater level of sort of.
Oversight?
Parameters around oversight. Exactly. Thank you very much. Brain just turned right off. I don't know what happened.
Know what this person's saying this.
So.
Can you, there we go.
So the only change is that we added yet another paragraph and that was the, I'm sorry, I, I had it in front of me and I lost it. The moderate purchases, which is between 10,000 and $49,000. All of that would need to be, to go through, all of those expenditures would need to go through the facilities committee, through the school committee via the facilities committee essentially is what happens. So the facilities committee has a discussion and then any purchase or any contract that's, that the superintendent would enter into is discussed with the school board. The school board is made aware of, of any thing that we're going to enter into, but it does give some flexibility in terms of gathering quotes, because one of the things we've been running into in the conversation, I actually just saw there's a bid at state level too. Is, is we're running into companies for, for smaller purchases. Companies are not, don't want to do the work that Scott just did, for example, of see, you know, writing the bid. Making sure the bid is, is a good bid and is, is completed, having it get to us. They, Scott had, Scott did a lot of work to get that bid to us actually. And, and you know, it was in on time and all of that stuff. And then comes to a meeting to explain it. That level of work for for projects that are not that expensive is just, companies aren't willing to do that. So micro purchases is where they're, we're making practical efforts to distribute the purchases equitably.
School, Lincolnville school.
Whoops. We still have somebody unmuted. The I'm sorry, I'm doing, trying to find the person who was unmuted. Small purchases are between 10,000 and 449,999. And that's where the facilities committee would have, would be part of the discussion. And then the, in every case, the school committee would be informed of the superintendent's decision. Then the moderate purchases are 50 to 149,000. And that's where quotes have to be reviewed with the facilities committee and, and again, decisions would be made with the school committee's knowledge. And then the sealed bid process we just went through would be for over 150,000. And then this is just a clerical change that I made because the actual federal threshold gets changed every five years. So now it's at 250, next September or November or whenever it's going to change again. So I'm just changing the federal threshold reference there for the next superintendent. So they can pay attention to that. So that's the changes.
Did you guys end up, did the, was this one that the policy committee looked at again, also to look at the, were we going to do the scaling or the checkboxes of did you do, did you not do for each of the quotes or that was going to be a separate policy?
BJ bidding, that's a different policy.
Okay. Yep. I just wanted to make sure.
Right. Yes. And instead of doing that, what we ended up doing was just adding into that policy, here's what we expect a complete bid, da, 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 da. And just instead of having, using the rubric, we just put in the policy that those are the expectations of a bid. So that was DJ bidding. This is DJR, which is the procedures.
Looks good to me. Anybody else have any other? Look at Emily's like, yeah, we're going to get one passed.
Kind of hanging around our necks for a long time. But it's good. We've done our due diligence. I think we have a nice, clear policy with procedures that are reasonable, but also make sure there's management and oversight.
I think it was good. I'll make a motion to approve DJR federal procurement.
I'll second.
Who is seconding? Vina?
Vina. Yep. All in favor of voting to approve DJR federal procurement manual. All four in favor. Thank you. And thank you to the policy subcommittee as well. Next we will move on to repeal the, the prior, the other DJR that procurement manual that we had. Anybody want to make a motion to repeal DJR that we had previously?
Oh, my commotion to repeal DJR, the previous version.
Well, that was Kirsten.
I can second that, Kate. This is Vina.
You.
I don't know if you, sorry, something just went crashing in my house. All right. So we have Kirsten made a motion and Vina has seconded to repeal the DJR procurement manual, the prior policy, all in favor.
Thank you.
All four are in favor. All right. Next we're moving on to title nine, federal changes to title nine rules and reinstating 2020 policies.
So Tracy will remember this, our first board meeting in 2020 in the gym. And via Zoom, we had to pass some policies around the new title nine changes. And then four years later, we had to pass some new policies just this last summer. And because we have a new administration at the federal government, they have vacated the procedures around title nine, the 2024 procedures. And we have to go back to the 2020 procedures. So the law has changed, so we need to reinstate our old policies.
Can you just, for the sake of clarity, state what title nine is and kind of the
Yes.
What in practice this will mean for change? I mean, we're going to follow policy.
Title nine is, is, is protection against sexual harassment for various protected subgroups. In 2024, subgroups were added. Now those subgroups are no longer federally protected. And there are some small procedural changes in, in terms of how you do what you do. But honestly, I could not explain that to you well enough tonight to really give that due justice. But the, we would still follow the main civil rights act, which does include these subgroups. But it would be a different procedure. We would, we wouldn't be under title nine. We'd be under the main civil rights act if we had some complaint about these subgroups that are no longer protected. Does that make sense?
Thank you for that. I just wanted to double check of like, what exactly in reality, it would mean for a change if anything.
For us, it means different, slightly different procedures. So if we had a title nine complaint, we would have to follow the 2020 procedures.
Any other questions from anybody?
Kate, I was just going to add, it's really, most of, most of the changes are just sort of subtle changes in how you go about investigating. It's like, if there's a claim, there's an incident, it's mostly around like addresses what's exact steps you take, and they're just very subtle differences. Substantively, I don't think it's.
The biggest substantive change is that there are classes that are no longer protected, certain groups that are no longer protected under.
In terms of what we do, because we're in the main civil rights law. I don't, I don't think it would change much.
Any other questions? Yeah, hearing none. Any, do, so we need to vote to.
Repeal and reinstate.
2020, repeal 2024 title nine rules and reinstate 2020 title nine policies. I need a motion, anybody?
I will make that motion. Do you want me to say it? Spell it out?
I got it.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Kirsten.
All right. All in favor of rolling back the title nine 2024 policies and then reinstating the 2020 title nine policies. All in favor.
Thank you.
All right. Three and all opposed? And one opposed, Vina is opposed. Okay. Thank you. And it does carry. All right. Next up is first reading of policies, JLE and JLR to reflect unified guidance from MSSA, MPA and MEA. And then we have first readings of edits to policy, INDJBR, student computer and internet use rules. A first reading of ADC, use and possession of tobacco and electronic smoking devices.
So just very quickly, the JLE and JL are, which is the dangerous behavior law, the policies that follow the dangerous behavior law. The MEA, MSSA, which is the main superintendent's association, the MPA, which is the main principals association and the main education association, which is the teachers union for the state. Took the year to look further at the law and to give us guidance. So the policy subcommittee compared our old policy to the guidance and decided to adopt wholeheartedly the guidance that was provided by these three groups, including, so JLE is the policy and JLR is the is the form the teachers would use if they did have, if they did have an experience with dangerous behavior. There's no real substantive difference. There's some subtle language differences and it, it lays out, explains a process that they agreed to, which is that a union member who's chosen by the association would be a representative for the per, the teacher that reported. So they have that extra layer of protection. That's pretty much the only substantive change to between our old policy and our new policy. So that's, and it's only a first reading. So I mean, if you have questions tonight, but if you have questions in between, you can, you know, let me know. The INDJBR is real easy. That is one word change. There is a section called student security, I think, and it stated that the teacher would give permission to share student address. And we all agreed that should be parent. That was brought up by Lincolnville parent. And so the, the policy subcommittee had no problem with that. Changing that word to parent. And then the tobacco and electronic smoking devices, that was a very old policy. We sometimes get some grants from the Y and some other areas. So we needed that policy to be updated. So we, that was a model policy put out by the main school management association. And so that's what that is just basically, the difference from our old policy is that adds electronic And, um, so that's what that is, just bas- basically the difference from our old policy is that adds electronic, uh, smoking devices and vaping. That, the, our last policy is 10 years old and didn't, or 13 years old, and, um, wasn't as specific to e-cigarettes and those kinds of things. So if anybody's got any further questions about that, or when you're reading them, you have any questions, just, um, give me a call.
Or if anybody has them now, you can also discuss now. Yeah, no, any other, does anybody have any questions? All right, so that was the first reading, so we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting for voting to approve. All right, next up is vote to approve hourly wages and benefits for school year 2526.
All right. Uh, I did send along to you the proposed hourly wages and benefits.
Kate, those are not in the shared folder because the file is labeled confidential. Should they be in the shared folder?
Not until you guys agree to them.
Okay.
I mean, we're sharing them now publicly. I, I can pull them up, but, um, until you agree to them, they're not really, you know, whatever you agree to tonight will be the public document, is what I'm trying to say. All right, so let me just find that document. So I highlighted for you in yellow the changes in the proposal, and again, this is a proposed document. Hold on one second, open please. And essentially the changes were, uh, are, um, what we have always done since I've been here is take the highest paid staff member and apply a percentage increase to that person, and then apply that to everybody, because we're talking, uh, some hourly wages here that are, oh, I'm sorry, it opened as a Google Doc and I did not, it's not reading correctly, so give me a second. Sorry about that. Let me download it and get it to open correctly. Talk amongst yourselves, I'll be right there.
If we were live, I could juggle.
Yeah.
I mean, nothing's stopping you from juggling now, Justin.
What have I got around me? Let me see.
Okay, here we go, this will come up, and you'll be able to read it.
Kate's gonna save you from the recording of you juggling on camera.
There you go, guys, here we go.
I would love that.
I'm doing it.
So, uh, the changes are highlighted now, just keep in mind, these are changes from August, right? We already made some changes last August, so I didn't highlight those. I've only highlighted, you, you voted on one last August, and now I'm highlighting this year's changes. Um, so the, the resulting 4% increase that is proposed for the top paid person on staff, uh, results in an hour, uh, excuse me, a dollar hour, $11 per hour increase for the staff members. Staff members are not identified here, this, this, um, these buckets are only for new hires, but I did add the $11 increase to all of these buckets. Uh, we added a statement that these salaries are a guide for new hires. Individual staff members currently employed receive increases to their current salary each year. These increases are determined by the principal and superintendent, apply equally each staff member, they're not based on merit. So just kind of explaining, because the buckets cause some confusion sometimes. I did try, Justin and I tried really hard to create a, um, a step system, remember, we talked about that in August, but it just was not gonna work with the current salaries of people. It just wasn't gonna, it wasn't gonna work. Um, with prior approval from the administration, we have, uh, stipends here for, uh, or, excuse me, certain bumps per hour for people who have BHP or, um, safety care, but we added these caveats. To receive this incentive, staff must be assigned by principal to a position that requires BHP training. So if we, we certainly should be paying people extra money for extra training and, and, uh, for, um, usually when you're a behavioral health professional, you're really, um, managing some difficult situations at work. And so that they should be, um, compensated for that, but, uh, just to have the training isn't enough to get that compensation. You have to actually be using the training at work. And then safety care, we added as assigned by the principal. Again, people need to be using that training, um, in order to get the, the bump.
Kate, can I add one little thing there?
Yep.
You, um, that safety care training receives an additional dollar per hour. I think that should also be highlighted. Previously, it was 50 cents an hour.
Oh, thanks, okay.
So that, that one little dollar an hour was actually a, a bump of about 50 cents an hour for the safety care training. So it just should be yellow, that's all.
I think that happened in August, though, Justin. I think that wasn't 50 cents in August. I think it was, I think in August we did that bump. But anyway, I'll look at it, I'll look it up. So all of these other things are things we all agreed to in August, or were already in existence, uh, before August. Uh, there's, we, in August, we agreed to an extra holiday. Um, uh, let's see, uh, but Justin and I are proposing that, uh, staff have, two extra days of sick time per year. Um, so they currently have 10, and the industry standard around the area is 12 at least, so we would like to bump them up to 12. Um, sick leave retirement was added last, in August. Okay, here's another long ti- uh, another, um, addition that we are suggesting. Um, Justin and I are proposing any full-time employee who has worked at LCS for 30 years total or longer shall receive a one-time $2,000 payment at retirement or separation of employment. Um, these are all the same. I do not believe there are any other changes. No, those are the, so those are the changes that we're proposing. Any questions?
What was the workdays again?
Oh, the workdays?
Yeah, they had. Or the school year.
The work year is. And nine holidays, which is 188 dol- 188 days a year.
And it comes in hourly rate for the full workday. Any questions from anybody else?
I think it looks good. Thank you, Kate and Justin, for the work on that.
You know, it's nice to see the longevity payment in there. Uh, it's a tough job, and for somebody doing it for 30 years, uh, I think nice to, to do something.
Any other questions or comments? If none, then we can take a motion to approve the hourly wages and benefits for school year 2526.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, Kirsten made a motion, Emily has seconded, all in favor of approving the hourly wages and benefits for school year 2526. All right, that, all four in favor? All right, up next, principals report preliminary budget overview. Now it's real time, start juggling, Justin.
Right now, all kinds of weird. Well, all right, well, I had, um, I have a couple of things to do here, because I see, I was, that there's not a, an agenda item pertaining to, uh, or at least that addresses a report out from the last facilities committee meeting. So, um, I'm gonna squeeze that into my, into my principals report, so it's not okay to you guys. All right, I'm gonna squeeze that in along, amongst a few other things, first, real quick, and then I'll get to the budget. So, um, I just wanted to give a heads up about some of the items that the leadership team has tackled over the past month or so. Um, we've talked about how to handle those, these are, these are big ticket items like bus bids, um, like, uh, how to handle recess for middle school students when the courts are covered in snow? What are they gonna do with themselves? Cause teenagers hanging around is, that's not, you know, with nothing to do, it's gonna be trouble. Um, we've had a number of conversations about how to increase, uh, communication between teachers and parents in sort of written format about what exactly is covered in classes, and we're still wrestling with that, for a complicated topic that doesn't seem like it should be, but it is. Um, we continue to talk about the students awards, uh, awards, uh, recognition assembly. We're gonna have, um, another one, a little bit after the next trimester. Um, we have two tiers of awards. We've got little pause awards that are recognized students on the daily who, um, just evidently show they're making some good choices, and then we have some bigger awards at the assembly, um, that recognize, um, kindness and compassion, and, um, both academic or social emotional growth and achievement. Um, we've talked about how best use our staff meeting time, and, um, how to use our time on early release days. Uh, we've talked a lot about budget requests, and we also developed a late start schedule. So we have a, we have a early release schedule, but we've developed a late start schedule, um, that provides a little bit more equity in terms of teacher planning time and student, um, sort of student distribution of minutes. So, been a busy, busy little bunch. Um, we've had, I'm moving down to item two on my, my report out. Um, we've done a s- I, I call it a soft lockdown, but really what it is, is an individual class lockdown, where the teacher just sort of walks kids through, and they do a really quiet, gentle, ease-in kind of lockdown on their own schedule, uh, with the classroom teacher. Um, but we are planning in the next, probably next, within the next week, six weeks, six to eight weeks, we'll do a real, full-scale school lockdown. Um, I'm preparing a letter to parents to give them a heads up. I'd like to have law enforcement, um, on site as we do it, and I have a tool to use so we can evaluate how we've done. Um, throughout the I Love You Guys Foundation. Okay, now, building reports. Um, so, let's see here, Amy was gonna help me out with this, um, but she's feeling so good, I'm just bummed about there. Um, so, we called to order at 3:12 on January 22nd, and, um, we, uh, covered a number of things, including a MSMA punch list. So Alvin reported out about a, a, a remarkable number of things that he's taken care of, many of which were small, but it was a laundry list of items that our insurance provider said, hey, do this, and maybe you'll save some money. So, basically, everything on that punch list has been completed at this point. Um, including, uh, postage about surveillance, uh, fire extinguisher, um, what would I say, like sort of evaluation? Um, they get checked, uh, but they've all been checked, but they, it wasn't recorded. Um, you know, clutter in certain places, we got our lift inspected. Um, things like labeling squirt bottles, those are all caught. They're very little, but it's, it's, it's a thing. Um, and, and labeling in the science room and things like that, shop clutter. Uh, the things that we have left to do is we need to run an inspection on the, uh, climbing wall. We're looking at the YMCA and, and SunDog, because I don't really know who does that. Uh, they, those are two organizations probably lead us in the right direction. Uh, we have to, uh, it, repair some of our emergency hallway and the lighting. Um, and it could take up to 10 months before we complete that, just because getting an electrician in there takes a little time. And then we are slated to have our gym bleachers inspected, I think, for like the first time. So, uh, we have hussies coming in to do that. Um, and, um, so yeah, that's where we are with the building. Um, I'm going to try to, so call the insurance company to get back in there, so they can see that our punch list has been punched, and maybe they'll lower our rates a little bit. Um, we talked a little bit about the plan to install an exterior outlet so that we, uh, a, a, um, what is it, a 50 amp outlet, so we can do the free mobile dental care. Um, so a program that's available to us. It's a, a $2,600 investment, so we may bump that to the summer or the next budget cycle. Um, and what I wanna do at the same time, instead of piecemeal, is to get the electrician who signs it up to take a look at our whole building and consider what it would take to wire the whole building, so that our generator could run it instead of just the one hallway.
Because the generator's big enough, right, Justin?
I need to, yeah, it's a 77K generator, which it's, I'm not an electrician. That's a large generator, I think. Like, your typical house generator is like 12, I think. So it's a significant generator. Um, I just, it, it, there are a lot of factors that I don't understand, so I really shouldn't talk about it much. I, I would like to find out if it could run the whole building and what it would take to do that. That way, if the power goes out, w- we don't necessarily have to abandon school. Um, and if this, the building becomes a warming center in the event of any, in a crazy event, then we have more than just Walsh Common to house the town with. Um, so I think it's worth a look, at least, and so did the committee. Uh, we did have some quotes. Um, we had a company give us a quote for, uh, the upgrade of the vestibule in upfront, and that would include a new button and video that, um, would actually take photos, video of people outside the doors, not once they've already come into the doors. Um, and there would be an intercom, so that you don't have to wrap on the glass to get Marie's attention. Seems like a reasonable thing. Um, that along with the key card doors, uh, the quote was very reasonable, and the team, we ca- we'll break into two parts, and that, uh, the, uh, the committee agreed that that is the direction we should go. We should actually do that this year. And I think the cost was somewhere in the order of $8,000 for, uh, phase one, and then $6,000 for phase two, approximately. Phase two being.
You still have.
The exterior doors.
In, you still have funds in that bucket that we made last year.
Yes.
Building, right?
Yes, the intercom, it's the same company, the intercom bid was really saved us a ton of money, um, and so we have remaining funds that we can do the second. We can do the, the key card system. And then I think we'll still have money left over from there. But, you know, hey, there's still some time left for some kind of disaster. Um, right, um, so we, we talked a lot about our HVAC, and this, this leads into the budget discussion too, our HVAC system, our heating and cooling. At this point, and I, Steph, Kate, I kinda, I haven't heard anything, but we put out an RFP for a company to give us a bid for our HVAC system, and we've received none, as far as I know. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Right. So I think, uh, what I discussed with the committee was actually, uh, talking to some folks who are professionals, getting, um, an independent evaluation of what our needs are for an HVAC system, and having that professional write the RFP, so that the specifications are, are clear, and it's an apples-to-apples comparison, instead of inviting companies to come in and say, hey, tell us what you wanna do. And then we've got apples and oranges, and they would put some figures in front of you, and you wouldn't know, you really wouldn't know, I, I wouldn't know what, what I was looking at. Um, so I think that's the wise way to go about it. The issue with that is the timeline. So, um, depending on the size of the bid, we might wanna put it out to bond. We might wanna get other financing. The bond bank only does two rounds of bonds, one in the spring, one in the fall, and we would miss them. So, we're, we're, the timeline is gonna be problematic, just giving you guys a heads up about that. Um, unless we just wanna replace the boiler. And I think that's relatively straightforward, but there's no cooling system attached to that. I'm not sure what else I've got here, some recommendations about upgrading a storage door and some light replacements. And we reviewed our one to three year comprehensive plan for the building. The biggest thing is HVAC. Okay, any questions about that part? Okay, riveting, I know. You guys can sit back, now you're on the edges of your seats. All right, so athletics. We had two outstanding basketball teams this year and the girls unfortunately lost in the final in overtime and they did very well. And I would say publicly that they absolutely deserve to win. They did basically everything they could and it was a very unfortunate call at the end and they ended up losing, but they remain the Bus Lines Small School North Champions. So I think they deserve a little bit of a clap up here. And then the boys also in overtime, thank you, Kate, to them were victorious for the second year in a row, and they were Bus Lines Small School Champions. So I think it's nice to recognize them in front of the committee, well done. And then I have, just in terms of staff, I'm still looking for a special education ed tech to help out in our self-contained program in K through two. Had an interview, I've got a couple of their prospects, but we're still looking. Okay, now any questions? All right, budget time. So Steph, feel free to chime in and help me out whenever you can here. Does everybody have the email that Steph sent you guys with, but proposed budget?
It is in the Google Drive too.
Excellent, excellent. So this is, this, this budget proposal changed dramatically from yesterday to today. Steph and I have been working just some backstory. The old budget format we used had a number of errors, particularly when it comes to coding. So not only were items and people improperly coded or coded as the wrong number, they were not grouped properly. Is that the same, safe, a fair way to say it, Steph?
Yeah, so for example, special ed really should have been split out into three separate containers so that we can maximize the subsidy we receive from the state, and it was not, same with regular education, which is why the budget to actuals are all kind of crazy, because it should be grade three through eight, K to two and pre-K. So we're making all of those corrections and more.
So and, and, and they're extensive, so it's not even just those big groups. When we look at how we coded our technology budget, for instance, it's wildly different than what it was, and it's, it's just more accurate. It's, it's more accurate, it's more what the state wants, and I think it's going to behoove us financially in the short and the long, long run. And so one of the things, the challenges you're going to have is adjusting to the new graphic, right? The new, the new spreadsheet, and it's going to be very, very hard for you to look at last year's night lines and then this year's lines and make a comparison. They're just not the same. You know, you're going to want to look at how much do the teachers cost, and they're split out three ways. And how much was that an increase? And you're not going to be able to.
Yeah, but that's a this year problem, right?
That's a this year problem.
Right, so that's fine.
Yes.
Thanks for recoding everything, I'm sure it's a huge amount of labor stuff.
Thank you.
Guys have been working very hard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Very hard.
So, so, so what, what we've come across is some double counting, because we're moving people around and trying to parse them out. And we've done our best to work through the glitches. And, and I, but I think there will still be some that remain, so please, this is, this is our, our best rough draft at the moment. So just take that with a grain of salt. Also, I want you to keep in mind that there are a bunch of moving parts. So things that are unsorted, or were just recently sorted, are the wages, benefits for ed techs. Teacher salaries are not yet sorted, so we've done our own little calculation to try to like estimate, but we really don't know, we, I think largely we've probably overestimated. The bus contracts are not sorted, although I will tell you that one bid, if you go with the lower bid, that would drop the entire budget down by about one point two five percent. Because we, we bid, I put in the number of, I think it was two hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars, so we drop it down about eighty nine thousand dollars. We still don't know what insurance costs are, we put a ten percent increase in and we still have to sort out what we're going to do for the HVAC system. So that's
So we put a dollar in for that.
One dollar, it's a bargain.
But, okay, so what are the big additions? What are the big asks?
So let me, let me roll through as best I can by article, and then feel free to interrupt me if you need to, okay? So in this first article, which is K through eight.
Three through eight.
Three through eight, I'm sorry, three through eight. There are no additional asks in the three through eight realm, regular education. The only increases really that you see here are sort of market increases and our best guess at things we don't know.
And if I could just also add, so previously, workers' comp has always been charged just to operations and maintenance. But it actually is supposed to be charged against, and it is paid against each employee. And so we've moved those into each of the salary payroll tax lines. So you, that you've never seen workers' comp, for example, anywhere except operations and maintenance, and now you do.
Right. So you'll see at the bottom, there's a twenty three percent decrease. That's, that's because we've removed K through two from that line, right? So you, you really can't go by the percent increases, you're going to have to go by the whole, the whole thing, okay? If you want me to get into it with more specificity, I can, but I think for now, probably article by article in the big picture is best.
We have a budget workshop coming up to do.
Yeah. Yeah.
Where do you work?
Okay. K two naturally is next. And again, this is regular ed, and there are no, no additional asks or expansions in K through two land.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
The only additions, actually, I should not say that are for, and if I, if this is the right place to say it, Steph, is that we've included money that was, is contractually obligated for retirees who have, I'm not sure, I can't remember what the, they've been in the district for a certain amount of time and they get up to thirty days per diem.
Of their, of their leave time if they have it.
Right.
If they retire. So we have some folks who are getting up to retirement age and we're trying to plan for that.
Right, and that, that just wasn't built into previous budgets. I'm trying to remember how much it was, Steph, I want to say it was twenty four thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Twenty four thousand dollars added in, so right around a half a point of the budget we had to build in right there. Probably point four, and that wasn't in previous previous budgets.
Correct.
Right. Okay, any questions? Okay, if I need to slow down, just let me know. Pre-K is the next, next article.
So can I just point something out? I'm sorry, Justin, to interrupt you, but this, the way this works now, you saw that decrease in three to eight. Now you'll see K to two will have a huge increase because we never had K to two broken out before. So that's kind of, sometimes those things can look like heart attack area, you know, three thousand percent increase. But it's just because we've never had any money in there before.
Right, right. Now, the pre-K pre-K line is increasing because last year our ed tech in the pre-K land was covered by an additional grant that Kate and I wrote. And so that, that grant is ended. So pre-K expansion grant is over and we've had to add in her salary back into the budget.
And we knew that was coming.
We knew that one.
Aged that off one more year, but, yeah.
That's right. And I believe that's the only increase in the, on the, on, on the teaching side, pre-K through or in the pre-K article. Okay. In gifted and talented? There are no, there are no additions, no requests. It's the same, it's just our estimates of, of what the changes might be in terms of salary benefits. Special education, regular classroom instructions. So keep in mind that, like Steph said before, we're now parsing special ed into a number of groups, right? We've got, we've got the resource room. We've got special ed, regular ed classrooms, so those that like spend most of their time in supporting special ed students out in the regular classroom. We have those that support students almost primarily, primarily in the resource room, and then we have self-contained. And our hope is that as we code those properly, it will buoy our subsidy. So let's see, I'm in special ed, regular classroom. I don't have any additions for special ed, regular classroom. No requests. And I don't think there are any reductions either, so so far, no reductions or additions. Right, Steph?
Right, just relocating, like, like there's, there was a teacher, regular, sorry, special education, regular classroom teacher salary was coded here, but it shouldn't have been, so now it's moved down to the resource room.
Right.
So just, yeah, changes like that.
We've moved an ed tech also that was coded as a regular education ed tech to a special education ed tech because it's more reflective of her duties. She's a one-to-one ed tech with a student with special needs. That's the sort of thing that will, will help us. Any questions on that? Okay. Let's see, special ed resource room. I'm also not asking for any increases there. Our resource rooms are fairly well and are adequately staffed at the moment. So I'm not, I'm not asking for anything in, in that realm. I mean, the additions would be equipment, perhaps. In the next, the next special ed, or, or, I, I don't think I should call this article, because it's not a different article, is it, Steph? It's
No.
Cost center.
Article. Same cost center, it's just a sub-center, it's just a
Subarticle.
The cost, cost center, yep.
Okay. So Yeah, category will be self-contained. Now this is where I'm actually making my most significant request. So given the needs that have moved into our, our district, we're finding ourselves, we've had to make some pretty serious adjustments. A lot of the a, a, a lot of our resources have had to be diverted towards other intents. And so we also have a number of students who are coming back to us from out of district placements or potentially going to do that. And, and when those students come back, although perhaps they've been successful where they are, it's a pretty big transition back to school and they're going to need significant support. And so I've put in here for three additional support staff for our self-contained program, so three ed techs. And my intent is to make them behavioral health professionals and safety care trained, if they are, if we're granted them. Any other questions? Any questions at all? Okay.
We'll end up having the workshop, I mean, I'm more seeing it as just kind of like laying out, here's the initial thoughts and then
Yeah.
We'll fill it, yeah.
And things will probably change between now and then, almost certainly they will. The, the other part here in special ed is that we've, we've run some numbers and we have our OT, occupational therapist is requested to be on staff. And, and it makes an awful lot of sense for us, it actually saves us a lot of money. And it helps us expand the, the number of kids that she could see. So she would come on as a halftime OT, so we've incorporated her into the budget as an employee. And then a, a thing I want to point out to you all is, is with the one student, with the student returning to us, so from out of district placements or, or multiple students, the, our out of district placement tuition monies come down, but also so does our seed money. So we paid about, we're on pace to pay about eighty thousand dollars in seed. And next year, our projection is it would be cut in half to about forty thousand. So yes, additions, but also a little subtraction. In fact, that would cover about the cost of one of those ed techs. I don't think there's anything else to talk about in this particular line, except to say that we intend to use our, our local entitlement money to cover the cost or most of the costs of our speech and language therapists this year.
Oh, so that would come out of the budget too?
That's not in the budget right now, only overflow monies. So anything that extends beyond the, any money beyond the local entitlements in here, was it like five thousand, I think we said?
Okay, great, okay.
Yeah, five thousand.
So it's already come out, okay.
Already come out.
Good.
Let's see. Stipends. Nothing is changing, I have not incorporated any changes in stipends at this point, largely because those are negotiated items and I don't know what those outcomes will be. I, I can't imagine they're going to move the needle to terribly much, but I just held pat for now. Our athletic costs, let me see, where am I at? I'm at the co-curricular, sorry, I'm having to toggle back and forth to see you guys in this this thing, so it's a little strange. It's hard to, it's hard, hard to keep the eye contact. Right, refs, officials, sports, no big changes there. The only piece I put in was some, some uniforms for our soccer team, because they are hopelessly, hopelessly at a date. I mean, we all love the style of the seventies, but we have to rock it all the time. Yeah, maybe it was the eighties, I don't know, running around with hammer pants. It's hard to make budget lively. All right, so skipping down to guidance and social work. The one ask here that I started with last year as well was to make that social worker position whole. I know there's been a lot of talk about the social worker position, I, I am very much dedicated to bringing that in. I want to make that happen and I want a budget that supports us being able to do that. I think a full-time social worker is ideal. And so if, if we can squeeze that other point five in, I'd, I'd be very happy. And so I, I put the request in here. The bigger, the challenge is going to be where, that still remains an issue, but I'm working on it, got a few brains on where that office might be.
You're talking physical space, right?
Yeah. Physical space, yeah. Right. Okay. In terms of nursing, no real changes here, very similar to last year, just natural increases. Now, we are in this part, improvement of instruction subtotal. I can't remember, Steph. I don't think we have many increases here at all, or it, it's changing things around. This is mostly about professional development.
And college tuition reimbursement, right?
College tuition reimbursement, so we moved, we moved this out of the regular ed line where it was and into this line before. So that's why it's increased so much, and that's the largest line item, right?
Yep, that's right.
Right. And whereas before we had all sub line, like all substitute costs, like smashed into one line, now they're parsed out.
Yeah.
According to the subarticle. And I think what you'll find is the state reimburses differently, because the special ed costs, they'll reimburse at a different rate.
That's right.
Uh, no real changes in the library. No additions, no real subtractions. Technology, the technology line has changed. There's no, no real, no big additions and no big, no subtractions. The, the change in, in here is mostly because of coding. We've had a number of, when we went through, Val does a tremendous job of collating all things tech into one big document. And for the, last year, I miscoded them all over the And for the, last year I miscoded them all over the place and previously they'd been miscoded all over the place. So now the, the numbers are changed significantly. They're just in different spots.
That's right.
I wish I could tell you where they all are.
Or where they were.
Yeah, they're in Yon. Yeah, they're just all over the place. Um, student assessment has remained the same. The sub-coordinator, we haven't made any, uh, changes, um, the sub-coordinator subsection.
Little increase.
Students, what is it? What'd you say?
There was a little increase, I think.
But I didn't actually incorporate an increase. I wasn't sure if that's what we had decided to do. But
Oh, I thought you did. Okay, nevermind. It's fine. We'll, we'll talk about it.
I don't think it's earth-shattering money. Right? Um, uh, no changes in terms of the board for you guys. We could discuss depending on, I think we bumped up our legal fees last year because we knew you were negotiating this year. We could, depending on whether you think you're going to need those legal fees or not, we could change that number. The superintendent numbers, uh, were provided to me by Steph and Kate. Um, I don't, I don't know. You guys could speak to any changes there, but I don't think there are anything, anything big.
I actually don't know. No. Board agreed to in December, so.
Right on.
Hasn't changed since then.
Right, so
Suppose the only potential difference is if, uh, the new superintendent negotiates a salary different from what we budgeted. Or benefits different from what we budgeted. Right?
We're all good there. It's all good.
Yeah, that makes sense. Cool. Um, in terms of my office, I'm not asking for any additions. Um, it's, I will tell you, I'm very grateful to have my additional admin assistant. It's made a massive difference for us and I'm really appreciative of that. And so those, that all remains essentially very close to the same. I think just a two percent increase in that, uh, that line. Um, transportation, this is, this is significant because we took last year's number, which was two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars for, uh, bus, for our busing. And we increased it by 10% to bring it to eighty-six, the two hundred and eighty-six thousand. So as I was saying before, a two hundred thousand dollar line brings us down eighty-six thousand dollars. That is that's, that's not nothing. That's very real. I don't think anything else changed dramatically in that line. I think in fact, we dropped fuel down a bit, which, you know, we just had a big fuel conversation, but I think it's because last year we spent fourteen thousand, we had fifty, uh, seventeen thousand in this line. So we dropped it down a little bit.
And we're looking at how, uh, we reimburse, um, transportation we purchased for special education. So that's kind of just sitting there waiting.
Right. Right. Actually having consistent policy about it.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of operations and maintenance, this is largely unchanged from last year as well. Just, uh, staff, uh, compensation increases. Steph and I went through and had to change around a number of line items because the, the things we had assigned to those didn't fit. But the big thing for you guys to pay attention to is I did maintain that fifty-one thousand from last year that we put as a miscellaneous line. So that's still there in part because I'm not quite sure what to do about the HVAC system yet. I don't, I don't know. I'm not sure how much it's going to cost. I'm not sure if we're going to bond it or have to borrow for it. And if we do, I don't know what our fiscal obligations will be. I think that line should be a conversation for this group as we receive more information about the heating system and cooling system. Because we may, we may want to increase that. We may want to consider it. We may want to consider that as a, a place to focus if we're going to change.
Would the facilities committee be able to weigh in at all in terms of like what their thoughts on that lineup and over the budget in terms of?
I think they would if they had new information. I just don't think they have new information. That's really what it comes down to. So, um, I don't think, the only thing I'm worried about uh, i- in this line is that we went, of course, this year we went with the snow removal per plow. Our timing, we, we need, every single one of us needs to stay out of Vegas. No one go to Vegas anytime soon because that was like the worst gamble, like wrong last year, wrong this year. Um, we'll be able to cover it though because of that extra money. I don't think there's anything else that increased or changed dramatically.
But just to clarify, because I think last time they were saying like, they felt like it was a negative slam on them. There's no reflection on the plow company at all. It's fully us and our ability to understand how to budget for plow season, for a whole season or just by plow.
They should go to Vegas. We should not. We, we just, we just, we just tried to save money and we tried, we tried. Yeah, so this is the last year of our, our debt payments. Those will be done. When did you say those will be done, Steph? Soon.
I think we paid in September.
Okay.
And that's it.
That's really awesome. Um, and then, and, and, and that's the rest. Um, that's so, so, so that's, that's the whole of it. One thing, the backstory or not backstory, the thing I want you to know that's really helpful is that our subsidy increased by two hundred and sixty thousand dollars this year from last year. That's a massive increase for us. And that's one of the reasons why I sent out that comparison to you guys. I knew we wouldn't have time to talk about it. But I reached out to, um, the DOE for some information about like, why exactly did this happen? And can we do more of why it happened? And, you know, obviously we can't because a lot of it has to do with student populations. And, um, the demographic of our, of our town. Um, and I have to look at it a little more closely and I have a appointment to talk to her to find out exactly what she thinks and why it happened. But I do think coding things properly is helping us. So if we code kids properly, if we code our staff properly, it, it makes a big difference. So that two hundred and sixty thousand helps a lot. Um, my quick calculation right now, and this is including the two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for the bus. It's including a step raise for the teachers, a full step raise for the teachers plus three point five percent, which is significant. I think we re-overestimated what we would need. And my goodness, I'm not sure what else. Um, we, oh, insurance costs up 10%. They were only up 6%. I think there's quite a bit of room for this budget to come back, for gravity to take hold a little bit. But as it is right now, the town, the local impact is four point three seven percent. That would be the local impact, local tax impact. Before all of those reductions. If you went with the lower bus contract, that drops it down to essentially three flat for tax impact for the town. For us. And I will say, we did already build in, um, the set wages and benefits increases for our hourly employees. That is already built in.
What we just voted on.
Yep. We did gamble on that. That you would approve.
Well, thank you for this overview. I mean, I certainly there's a lot to digest and I will end up having thorough conversations and inviting the budget committee and select board to join in, in a workshop. Um, and I think Kate had said it was May thirteenth is what they're looking at for like a town vote on like the town meeting for like
Actually.
Did it change?
There's something going on at the school, so we had to move it to May nineteenth. Those, that's part of what I was going to tell you tonight. So uh, May nineteenth, the Monday though too, which I know is better for, uh, most of you guys. So hopefully, but you don't all have to come to me. I, I can talk about that in, in my report.
So it's mainly just kind of as we're looking at all of this, um, knowing that's the ultimate timeline to have it wrapped up well before then because they have to
Yes.
Just have the town part of it. So my only pitch is to just make sure town folks know about it. And once we pick a date for the workshop to make sure that we get, get it out to everybody so that they know what it is that we're looking for. Um, and we'll get working on kind of Kirsten, I was thinking that deck that you, or the PDF from last time, we can use a similar format for each cost center and start looking at that and adding in info as we do the workshop, um, just to go into it really well prepared.
I think that's great. We did, we did start the draft budget and Justin, the, those numbers, it's nice to see that they're um, starting at a lower spot and I appreciate all the hard work you put in there.
Well, it really helps to get the extra subsidy. I mean, that's a, that's a game changer, but I also think we're much closer to a final, a more refined product to like give to you to vote on. I anticipate once all those contracts are buttoned up, the negotiation for teachers and the bus contract that we will be, I, I, Steph, I think it'll be a short turnaround for us.
And we'll get the insurance, likely get the insurance information. We usually get it right at the final hour, the end of March. As you usually vote on the final budget at your April meeting and then, um, uh, and the budget committee has looked at it and everything else by then. So we, we, we do need to button it up by April.
Do we know what's typical for the state allocation? Like what is, is this like really atypical to get?
Yes. This is big. This is a big deal, especially for Lincolnville because you don't, you don't tend to get a lot of, um, subsidy. I can do a study. We can put it in the, um, in the budget presentation. You know, of, 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 uh, allocations that you've gotten over the last, however many years you want that. It's easy, easy information for me to pull up.
And there's not wrong numbers anywhere, right? Like they're not going to be like, oh, just kidding.
No, I mean, I went and talked to them. I think so. I think
Justin actually followed up with the folks at the finance team at the state level.
But I also think that some of it might have been wrong numbers previously. I mean, I, 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 I think like state reporting is Yeah.
Under reporting on our part. Yeah.
Yes. Or, or improper coding. Um,
Yeah, I think the work that Steph has done has definitely made a difference. Again, so if you ever said this last night too, but you know, if you're ever wondering whether or not your business manager is worth it. He has saved us a ton of money. So
Two hundred and sixty.
She doesn't like when I say that because she feels like it puts pressure on. But
Yeah, thanks.
Certainly been of a benefit to us all over the last year and a half.
Thank you.
That subsidy is for this year, correct? Like
It's coming, it's coming, the coming year. It's for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Fiscal twenty-six. Yep.
Super. Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Gosh, can I be done?
Thank you. I don't know. Is there anything else in your principals' report?
I'm all out of, I'm all out of wind. I'm done.
I think going forward, we'll probably just have a separate line item for budget overview instead of putting it within superintendent or principal, it like, it'll just be its own okay, section in the agenda.
Still going to be talking this much, though.
I know, I know.
Put up with me.
We'll listen. We'll listen.
And all the teachers in the audience, they're so tired of my voice, I imagine. Oh.
So do you guys typically schedule now the, your next budget meetings or how do you typically do this? We put, um, March twenty-first, uh, twenty-fourth as a tentative.
We do have to decide that before the end of this meeting. But yeah. Yeah. We'll decide that tonight, Steph.
Okay, great. Thanks.
All right. Superintendent's report.
All right, um, skipping down to general information because most of the stuff at the top has not changed. Uh, just, um, put in a, a little paragraph about the changes in federal protocols and federal grants and, uh, there's been a lot of uh, news about executive orders and such and what's going to happen to the education department and, um, you know, we we have been consulting with the DOE and consulting with attorneys and taking things kind of one step at a time. Uh, in terms of, uh, civil rights, we follow the main, you know, Civil Rights Act, Human Rights Act and, um, wanted to reiterate that. Um, and then in terms of the federal grants, I mean, in some ways we're lucky, we don't get a ton of federal grants. So it's not like millions of dollars are on the line. It's, it's, uh, it's under a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and it would not be terrifically easy to do, but if we suddenly lost all of our special ed money, we would have to reabsorb just the federal grant piece of it into the general fund, um, title one. And what goes away too is, is some of the requirements that are going to go away if, if the, if those things go away, but in all cases, we're just going to do what's as best we can, what's right for the kids and make sure that we're consulting with our attorneys in the DOE at all times. So so if we're, if we seem slow to respond, it's because we're waiting for guidance a lot of the time. Changes in our retirement offerings, we already talked about that. We are really, um, excited about that program. The Power School breach, you should have gotten an, an email from Justin. Power School, uh, has some free resources for folks if they did get, and they were supposedly contacting people individually if they got, um, impacted by the breach cup, from a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the hourly wages and benefit I laid out for you, the, uh, changes we were proposing. We did hear from our auditors and, uh, they scheduled twice and were canceled twice due to snow. They did finally come on Tuesday. They took their LCS stuff, the twenty-three, uh, audit stuff. So they are beginning the twenty-three audit. So that's very exciting. Can I just add to that? Please. I asked if we could schedule fiscal year twenty-four as soon as twenty-three is done and they said, no. So I, I made the request and I'll continue to make the request, but they are not interested in, um, getting us on the books because there are other schools that need to be audited first.
Okay. And that might be something we want to, I mean, I don't know how many different auditors there are, but that could be something we talk with the town about who we have doing the audit. Maybe that's if we're caught up and ready to go and they're not willing to do it, then we can talk with the with Dave and the select board to find out, do we need a different option for twenty-four? Go ahead, Kirsten.
Well, it's, uh, that's, thanks for asking, Steph. That's all I was going to say.
Um, okay. And then, um, you know, I, we're talking about the twenty-six budget and I just laid out for you that we did get our ED two seventy-nine. We just got it. And we were happy to see that your increase in subsidy was two hundred and sixty thousand dollars more than it was last year. The local allocation also increased thirty-two thousand. So the expectation from the town to get that extras, to get that subsidy also increased. But for us budget-wise, that alleviates our budget by almost three hundred thousand dollars for this year. So that's helpful. I did want to say, we did talk to Dave and, uh, have scheduled the special town meeting for the school budget on May nineteenth. That is at six o'clock at the gym. That is uh, not a school board meeting, but school committee members do come. And, um, that is, but you do want to bring everybody that you know that can vote in the town of Lincolnville because at that meeting, votes can be taken in terms of, um, we come up with the final numbers for the budget, but that meeting is where those numbers are deter, are decided upon. And, um, then of course the vote is in June. And we had discussed a tentative when I did a doodle poll to see, to get us to this date. Everybody was also available on, uh, February twenty-fourth. So we did discuss that as a tentative budget workshop date, but we do need to decide tonight when we're going to have a budget workshop. So that's my report.
Kate, I have a question for you. Um, that state subsidy for us that went up so much, did you see that across the other schools?
Yes, yeah. Yes, yeah. All of our schools got significant increases. So that's why I'm laying the blame at Steph's feet, but um, there are other, other things, but it is it has been helpful that we've been reporting more correctly.
It went up the most in Lincolnville though, just saying.
It did not go up the most in Lincolnville, but it's also part of the governor, you know, paying the fifty-five percent. Like there's a lot of other things at play. So, and it's kids moving in and out, whether or not we have kids who are economically disadvantaged, special ed, you know, that stuff as well. But certainly can, it is not hurting that we're reporting correctly.
That's a good way to put it. It's not hurting. It's certainly not the most though.
So uh, yeah, so um, budget workshop date. And, and the budget presentation, uh, Kirsten and I did meet. And I think Tracy's plan is to kind of take notes on that original deck, right? Uh, during our budget workshop to, as to what we want to present to the community. So that is underway.
Fabulous. All right. Do let me, do you want to just decide now on that, just February twenty-fourth? Are we cool putting that in the books and extending that invite out to the community and select board and budget committee?
I will say that I will not be in the country.
The twenty-fourth, okay.
But I think you'll still have Quorum. It sounded like a lot of people were available, so. Yeah, I'm here.
Well, and Amy's not here, so I don't know if things have changed. So that's a good, that's a question.
I think Amy's planning on it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll be here too.
Uh, right. Well, let's plan on it and I, I can also find out. Or Kate, do you usually reach out to the town to let them know? Is that just to find out like, do they already have a meeting or if there's anything else already going on?
I don't usually do that before we, we set the date, could, just because dates are so hard to come by, but I do write an agenda and I was just putting in my calendar for tomorrow. I can invite them for sure.
I just want to make sure that they can, that they don't have another meeting already have, like if there's a select board meeting or a budget meeting, something else like competing with it.
Let me look at the town uh, calendar.
Do we need to come up with an alternative date?
Maybe that's a good idea.
We might even do the second date, yep.
Is there a day that week that works well for everybody? That same week?
That isn't, that night, the twenty-fourth is a select board meeting in the town of Lincolnville, just so you're aware.
All right, so that probably isn't the best then because they probably are going to want to be involved. Was the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh? Go ahead.
The twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh are going to be not a good idea for me to be.
What else we got? What, what about the first week of March?
Uh, we have a school committee on the third. I have hope on the fourth. Nothing on the fifth. We have negotiations on the sixth and nothing on the seventh.
Would the fifth work for people? That's a no for Emily.
Theoretically, I think I can do it.
I am, I am not available on the fifth. Well, it depends on what time it is, I guess.
Those ones, we usually tend to start at five.
Uh, I would be late.
Okay. Monday, the tenth?
That's a, it hopes school committee meeting.
The eleventh, twelfth?
Is.
I'm not available the eleventh and the twelfth, we have we have some potential budget, something.
Hope we have Appleton School Committee. And the budget.
Right, right.
What about, what about the sixth? Did we already, sorry, did I miss that? I know we have negotiations until five, but we could potentially do it after.
I could do the sixth.
I can.
What are we talking about? Which day?
March sixth.
I can do it. I'd rather not, but I can do it.
I hear you, Justin.
Yep, I just have something else I'm going to have to miss.
I have no life of month of March, Justin, so.
All right, so March sixth, five P M?
Yeah. Uh, well, we have negotiations till five. Do you want to do five thirty? We can grab some pizza or something.
Well, Angela usually feeds us for the workshop.
Five thirty would be much better for, for me. I think I could do five thirty, but.
And it doesn't even have to be that, I mean, we can do the normal six. I think we just tended to do it a little bit earlier to get out a little bit earlier, but if y'all want six instead of five thirty, that's fine.
I prefer five thirty. The earlier the better.
Me too.
Uh, that is the conservation commission at four o'clock in Ta- Lincolnville, so there's no um, uh, meeting.
Thank you for looking. All right, so three, six at five thirty P M.
All right, fabulous.
And then Kate, will you let town?
Yes.
Dave, no? And
Yep.
I'll put it out on the bulletin board and Facebook community.
And I'll post in the agenda the week before.
Excellent. All right. Next is the items for March third's meeting. We got the principal's compensation.
We have the executive session, right, for the principal's competition that we have budget development as its own uh, as its own line item. So we will be going through some of it that night as well.
And we can invite them to that too, but I, it's just less of a back and forth, like community conversation, like workshops are community asking questions and stuff too, so.
And then the second reading and votes to approve those policies that we discussed. That should be.
Bus bids. Bus bid.
Oh, and the bus bid.
We gotta, we gotta decide on the bus contract.
Yes.
Can we also have a line just for an update if there's any on the student learning committee, subcommittee?
Yeah, Kirsten, you're going to have to let us know when you're available this month if you're going to be out of the country.
Everybody's going out of country, I'm.
I'm not, I'm, I'm here.
Black guy just stay in Maine. I don't go anywhere. I don't think there was any other.
Well, March is usually all budget all the time.
Tracy, I heard you were going to be a chaperone on the Quebec trip. That's what I heard.
I think Jack would um, absolutely murder me if I was. I was for specifically forbade from doing any such act. Nothing lamer than your mom going. All right, next is adjournment.
Yes.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make.
Don't all jump at once. Okay.
I'll second.
All right, Emily made a motion, Kirsten second, all in favor of adjournment.
Now, it's going to be super cold tomorrow morning, super, super cold.
Thank you, Kate. We will be.
Thank you all.